If we could please introduce ourselves.
Gabrielle Whaler, Communications Intern.
Bridget Dory, Communications Manager.
Leslie Harvey, Clerk to the Board.
Hamilton County Commissioner Alicia Reese, Vice President of the Board.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Thank you all so much, and I am Stephanie Summer Adumas, President of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. We will proceed and get to work. Our first order of business, as it always is, is a silent prayer and a pledge of allegiance. I would ask, as we have our silent prayer, if you could, this week marked over 1 million people that died from COVID-19. And I'm sure it's probably a little more than that. But if you could just think about those families, those that were impacted either directly or indirectly because of this tragic occurrence. Thank you so much. Amen. If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, election under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second. Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. You have before you presentations. I got word that the mayor may be a little late. But what I will do is to read about the proclamation and how we ended up coming here with the Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, which I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I think this would be our, is this our third year? Yeah, so we've done, we started it a couple of years ago. So it's so important to do. And I will start. Proclamation recognizing May as Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Hamilton County. Whereas the Hamilton County Commissioners recognize May as Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, also known as AANHPI Heritage Month. And that this must be a time to better understand the contributions made by Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders to Hamilton County and the United States of America. And whereas Asian Americans and Native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders make our community more vibrant through diversity of culture, language, and religions. There is no single story of the AANHPI experience, but rather a diversity of contributions that enrich America's culture and society. And whereas Hamilton County celebrates and honors the invaluable contributions that AANHPI communities have made to our nation's culture and the arts, law, science and technology, sports, and public service. And whereas this AANHPI Heritage Month in Hamilton County, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners thus celebrate this exemplary contributions of AANHPI residents to Hamilton County, Ohio. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County thus hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and it's signed by all our commissioners. We, all three of us selected someone for this occasion. And so I'm going to go to Vice President Reese first until the mayor arrives. Thank you.
Thank you. The first portion of the proclamation, do you want me to? We'll just read the bottom. Yep. So the first portion is the same as what was just read. But I will read the last whereas for our folks that we are celebrating today. Whereas. Whereas Asian Americans and Native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders Month in Hamilton County is celebrated. Today, we're excited to celebrate Ronnie Aikina. Ronnie is a four-time President's Club recipient as a Senior Integrated Media Executive for Urban One to serve the urban communities of Cincinnati, also known as Radio One. Mr. Aikina is a 12-year Army veteran with tours to Hurricane Katrina as a captain, Transition Team Deputy Chief, Chief of Al, Chief of ALANBAR Providence Operation Iraq Freedom. He is a board member of the AACAC Asian American Cultural Association in Cincinnati. He's also one of the many co-founders with the NAACP in Cincinnati. He is a National Association of Asian American Professionals. He is an advisor to the UC Filipino Student Association and the Entertainment Chair of the Asian Food Festival AFF Cincinnati. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners thus hereby recognize and celebrate the contributions of Ronnie Aikina in the Hamilton County and our community. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners of Ohio do hereby proclaim the 22nd day of May of 2022, Ronnie Aikina Day in all of Hamilton County.
I appreciate it. When I was given notice that I was chosen for this, I was very much humbled. It's been a humbling year so far. Humbling two years, for sure. Family and friends and community coming together to be able to really be inspired to put a footprint here in Cincinnati. I know we're a very small population, being Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. And all we can do is work together. And I said I couldn't take all the credit. So I'm honored to be chosen for this. But I know it takes a village. And it's been, I told you, Commissioner Reese, that we got to have recognition for one of the major players for the Asian Food Festival with ACAC. And quite interestingly, the mayor is actually doing a film right now, filming with our asianaddy.com for a hot take segment. So he probably is going to come here a little bit red and spicy. That's why he's late. So, oh, he's here right now?
Yeah, on the other side.
Okay. So, but it's always motivating to be able to be inspired by, you know, of course, friends, community, being able to bring my family here, my parents moving in with us through COVID, to bring the generations together with my three children, with my amazing wife, and to be able to do something to be an agent of change, to have representation and visibility in the community for our culture. And so with that said, I've learned now more that action speaks louder than words. So I'll shut up and thank you very much.
Please don't leave because we're all going to take a picture with you when we're, you can leave the podium.
Okay.
Oh, you listen. We'll get right back with you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
It is my pleasure to recognize Pavin Perik, who is with us this afternoon. Pavin, as we all know, is the current Clerk of Courts. Before though, serving as the Clerk of Courts, this board appointed Pavin to River City to help us with some of the work down there. And Pavin, you've done a fantastic job down there. And so I think it speaks to your heart for public service, not only in elected office, but as a volunteer board member with River City. So thank you for your service to the county. So I will read just a little bit of your bio in recognition of you and proclaim your day, which happens to be my little brother's birthday. So you two will have to share that day together. Maybe I'll visit you out at an establishment somewhere. So the beginning of the proclamation is similar to the other ones. Proclamation in recognition of AANHPI Month and honoring Pavin Perik. Whereas in 1983, Pavin was born in Cincinnati and raised by parents of Indian descent, whose mother immigrated from South Africa and father from India. He is a graduate of Princeton High School, Xavier University, and the St. Louis University School of Law. And whereas Pavin began his legal career in Cincinnati working under Common Pleas Court Judge Nadine Allen, the first African-American countywide judge elected in Hamilton County's history. He also served as the former Chief Legal Counsel for the Ohio Senate Minority Caucus, which is where we met, Legislative Counsel for the Federal Home Loan Bank of Cincinnati, and he has taught as an adjunct professor at Xavier University and the University of Cincinnati College of Law. And whereas since 2013, Pavin has served as a judge advocate in the US Army Reserve, including time as a Special Victims Counsel representing victims of military sexual assault, and has since earned the rank of Major. And whereas Pavin continues to be a leader in the legal community through current and former service on boards and commissions, including the Board of Trustees for the Cincinnati Bar Association and the Asian Pacific American Bar Association of Southwest Ohio. And whereas, in December of 2021, Pavin was appointed to the position of Clerk of Courts in Hamilton County, Ohio. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County does recognize Pavin Perik for his hard work and outstanding service to Hamilton County and does hereby proclaim the 24th day of May 2022 as Pavin Perik Day in all of Hamilton County.
Thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse. Thank you, Commissioners, for this honor. It's good to be here with many friends, some people I've known for a very long time, some that I look forward to getting to meet and learn more about. But you spoke to what's important to me, and I think kind of going back to what Ronnie said. I've known Ronnie for a few years too, so it's wonderful to share today with him and the mayor as well. Representation matters. Representation matters, especially for a community that is not large in numbers around these parts of Ohio or the country. And so to be able to choose to have a career in public service, to be able to excel at that career, to be able to help show other small children that it's possible. When I was young, it was not possible. Maybe it was, but we didn't know that it was possible to serve in public office at the levels to which you see the mayor and myself, or the Vice President, quite frankly, of the United States. And seeing it, seeing it happen first in 2008 when President Obama was elected, seeing it happen every election since then, it shows a community, and many communities, that you can make a difference. That no matter where you're born, what zip code you were born in, you can make a difference. And I am just thrilled that I could do this specifically here. This is where I was born. This is where I was raised. So I went to high school, so I went to college. This is home for me. And to be able to, be able to stand up here with, again, so many friends and accept this today means so much to me. And I can't wait to show my kids, who are eight months old and not even three, so they have no idea what any of this means. All I know is I'm not home all night. But to be able to one day show them and explain to them what it was like to grow up here before, what it is like now, and hopefully all of us together make this a community that they can be, continue to be as proud of as I am today. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Vice President Reese has an additional proclamation.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. We couldn't have this day without acknowledging the organization that puts on the wonderful, tasteful Asian Food Festival. Boy, it was phenomenal, and it happens right here on Court Street where our headquarters is. So I have a proclamation here, as whereas the Asian American Cultural Association of Cincinnati was founded in 2014 to support their flagship event, Asian Food Fest. The Asian American Cultural Association of Cincinnati is an Asian-led 501(c)(3). Their vision is to make Cincinnati a more diverse and inclusive city by centering Asian-American experiences to increase Asian-American visibility and representation. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners thus hereby recognize and celebrate the contributions of the Asian American Cultural Association of Cincinnati in Hamilton County and our communities. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio thus hereby proclaim the 23rd day of May 2022, Asian American Cultural Association of Cincinnati Day in all of Hamilton County.
Thank you very much to the board. Thank you very much to the AAPI leaders, AAPI supporters, who have made such an impact in the county and in the city. Though Asian Americans are only 2.8% of the city, the impact of this community has made, we believe, are bounds above that. So thank you so much for this. And here's to continuing years of making Cincinnati a more diverse representative city, and also I'd like to add, more delicious city as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, the mayor of the City of Cincinnati. If you could come forward, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. My staff told me I was to report to the principal's office, so here I am. I wasn't sure why I was here.
There you go. And what I want to say to you is delay is not denial because I thought of you as we were recognizing people last year. To, I really wanted to acknowledge you, but you were running for office, and I did not want to be political. So here we are today.
I run for office a lot, so sorry about that.
So I'm going to read this proclamation to you, everyone that's listening. Whereas Aftab Puraval is the 70th Mayor of Cincinnati, the son of first-generation Americans. He is making history as Cincinnati's first Asian-American mayor. As mayor, he is committed to serving Cincinnati's 52 neighborhoods. He has made equitable economic growth a top priority of his administration, as well as comprehensive reform and the improvement of public safety, affordable housing, and environmental action. He served as Hamilton County Clerk of Courts from 2016 to 2021, the first of his party in 100 years. And during his tenure, he brought modern and professional reforms to the clerk's office. He paid a living wage to all employees and became the first county office holder in Ohio to offer comprehensive paid family leave. By ending nepotism, by cutting waste, and by making the office more professional, he saved taxpayers millions of dollars. Mayor Aftab graduated from the Ohio State University and the University of Cincinnati for law. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners thus hereby recognize and celebrate the contributions of Mayor Aftab Puraval to Hamilton County and our community. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio thus hereby proclaim the 20th day of May 2022 as Mayor Aftab Puraval Day in Hamilton County.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. President Adumas, thank you so much. That's so generous. Commissioner Reese, Commissioner Dreehouse. It feels like coming home, being back here at the county. I remembered the floor that the county commission was on in the elevator, very proud of myself. My staff disbelieved me, but it feels, feels so good to be back. I'm so grateful. You know, it's so interesting, the two individuals that I follow here to the podium, and I think it reflects the impact of our community, of our AAPI community on the broader region. Pavin Perik, our second Clerk of Courts of Asian background in a row. I'm extraordinarily proud of his work and his legacy in that office. And Lum, who is just being honored for the Asian Food Fest, he and I graduated the same high school in the same year. So we have known each other for a very long time, and so excited to see him contributing to our community. Lum was a lot cooler than I was in high school. I think he used to bully me, actually, so. Anyway, I'm so, so genuinely honored. I don't have a lot to add that has already been stated, but just to say this. The strength of our community really lies in our diversity. The impact that Black and Brown leaders and communities have had is the principal reason why Hamilton County in Cincinnati is the future. And I look forward to continuing to collaborate with the three of you to ensure that our, our community, our tri-state area is a destination for that young and diverse talent that is critical for us to grow and to grow with racial equity. So thank you so much for your leadership. Thank you so much for lifting up the AAPI community. And thank you so much for honoring me. I'm so very grateful.
Well, thank you so much. We're going to come down and take some pictures very quickly. We'll probably get all three, and then it's Bridget.
And then just watch the trip hazard. I think that looks good. And Stephanie, can I wedge, we'll intersperse with Commissioners. And Ronnie, would you mind going on the other side of Commissioner Reese? And we'll get you all in. Yeah, if you got the proclamations, go ahead. All right, right here. Thanks, everybody. I gotta get back. Thank you.
All right. On the, after the three, one, two.
I'll just shift over here, please.
Oh, okay. Bridget, she doesn't trust my camera. Oh, you're already.
Yeah.
Got his family there.
Okay, that was, that was great. You thanked them all. I'm going to move forward. We're going to go straight into our public hearing before we go to public comments. We have a public hearing, continued public hearing for the vacation of Willow Road. And I will open it up. Do we have any staff here that wanted to talk about it at all?
I believe when we continued the hearing, you had asked for an opinion from the prosecutor, and I believe you have received that. Commissioner Reese asked for a timeline, and that was presented to her. So we have nothing in addition to present.
Okay, but thank you for getting up anyway. I appreciate it. No other comments, or did you want to?
I'm here for questions.
Okay. I just thought you might want to talk about how important it is to you for the honeybees, not the bumblebees. Would you like to, I mean, I'm not, you don't have to.
If you need anything answered, that's fine.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I think when people come all the way down and they try to park and all that kind of stuff, I just want to leave the opportunity open for you. Okay, with no other, no other comments, then I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. And this resolution will be coming forward to us, our following meeting coming, our meeting coming up.
Madam President.
Yes. During the second, okay.
Madam President, I just wanted to say thank you for the information. I know we had asked for some information, and that was, that was helpful. So I just wanted to say thanks to the engineer and the prosecutor's office for the information. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go up to. Thank you. So we'll go up to public comments. Anybody on Zoom at all? No, okay. We'll move forward with comments and motions by the commissioners. I have a couple things. Let's see, on Sunday, I attended the installation service for the new pastor at New Jerusalem Baptist Church. We had recognized last year Reverend Lynch at New Jerusalem, and he is leaving. He'll still be around, I'm sure, but there is a new pastor who they installed. It was, and I was able to say a few words along with some other dignitaries and also elected officials. So I thank, thank everyone for the invite. And then Kim Lotterbach, on Monday, I did a webinar with them from Ready. They're talking about their concepts and their next moves, their strategies, and what they're thinking about as it relates to Hamilton County. So it was just an informational, get to know each other again meeting, so I enjoyed that. On Tuesday, May the seventeenth, I went to Deer Park Library to celebrate the millionth book celebration of the Imagination Library, which started initially, Dolly Parton started it all over the country, really. And so in Hamilton County, they focused on trying to make sure they give out a million books to children, to young children. So far, so far, forty thousand young children have received books. And I remember when the number was just going, going, going. And so it's no cost if you have anyone from zero to five years old and you want to get a book, and it comes every month, you can get a book. And so you can contact the public libraries, you're familiar with it. Governor DeWine's wife spearheaded it specifically down here. So it's a great program, and it was just a great time to think about all these young people that have received books and the imagination that a book can give you and open up a whole nother world for you, no matter what your position or condition is in life. You can imagine being somewhere else if you need to. So I truly enjoyed that. I also participated on that same day with the Commission, the CCAO Human Services Committee. And they talked about some legislation that's coming forward, and I'll talk more about that at another date. But for this, I'm also in the Public Safety Committee for CCAO, and that's, I have an upcoming meeting to deal with public safety. I remember when I was, we had our last meeting, most of the talk was about corrections, facilities and how to enhance them and enlarge them and all that. So I'm hoping that we will get to other discussions rather than how to build more jails. And I'm sure we will, because I'll advocate for that. So that'll be coming up very soon. I participated in the Investment Advisory Committee. We have a new investment company, The Red Tree, and they're doing some good things and looking at our finances and, and our investment portfolio, and we're doing well as a county. So I attended that yesterday. And then this morning, I attended the Public Works Officials of Southwest Ohio. This week, do you know about that, Eric? I think this week is a Public Works Officials, official week in Ohio. And so I came in and it was a whole lot of hardworking people in there. I really went in just to introduce myself and to let them know that we really appreciate what they do for this county, for each village, each township, and what would we do without them. So just to, just to say hello from Hamilton County and let them know that we appreciate them. And I won't mention it again. When I, I thought about, I made a parallel, I guess, between the, you waiting for me? No. But I was just thinking, isn't that ironic and so different? We talk about the million deaths, and then we had a million books, and so how we try to change our mind frame to more positive things. And I thought, you know, I, I think about that and I think about the, I think about the families. And so we just continue to pray. As people have noticed, our prayer is usually on Thursday, but we've been doing it on Tuesdays because of those shooting sprees and all of that. So we just pray for Hamilton County and the United States and the world, so.
Yeah.
You couldn't, what part? You couldn't hear? I need to go over. Okay, should I start all over? No. Give me a mic and, okay, I apologize. So I was getting into, but anyway, thank you so much. I appreciate it. I'm gonna go on to Vice President Reese. Thank you for telling me, yeah.
Thank, thank you. Thank you very much. First of all, I just want to thank, I've got a lot of people that called our office and have sent me prayers. They saw me walk around on a crutch, and now I'm down to one crutch, so I'm doing good. But I just want to let people know I am okay. I tore my meniscus in my knee, and I did not do it roller skating, because everybody knows I roller skate. Finally went to rehab and they told me it's a lot of wear and tear. So when I'm running on concrete or doing a lot, so I don't know. Maybe it was a 513 relief bus to go to seventy-four locations. Or maybe it was going down to the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. I go down there at least twice a week, looking at the project, trying to make sure it stays on schedule and try to get it done and trying to show more people the location. So, but I am, I am okay, and I'll be back up and going. So I told my rehab trainer, I want the Joe Burrow special. I want to be back like Joe. So she said, we'll be back like Joe, so I'm excited about that. So, but thank you all for the prayers and the concern. I really appreciate it. Wanted to also highlight something I think is touching all of us. I know it is. Makes it hard for me sleeping at night when we think about the shortage of milk for these babies. You know, if you want to get me, you get me on two ways. You get me on senior citizens and babies. And just trying to think about what we could do, and I really didn't understand about the shortage, because it's a powder. And we have all of these brightest minds in our country, and while we're not able to come up with that solution baffles me. But wanted to maybe ask, obviously praying for the babies, because, you know, babies can't speak for themselves. And we have so many, the mayor was here, I forgot to tell him, congratulations to him and his wife for their newborn. Judge Carrie Bloom and her husband, they just welcomed their newborn. And there's so many newborns every minute, second, that do survive. And certainly, we offer prayers to President Dumas's family who lost a newborn. So this is so serious, and I'm not exactly sure what we could do. I know we offer through Jobs and Family Services SNAP benefits to make sure there's food. I know that Kirk Rybert, he through the Free Store Food Bank, they deliver food for families. And I just wanted to ask the administration, maybe through Jobs and Family Services and all things that we have, if we have pantries. Is there anything, is there a report on food? Is there someplace a mother can go? Do we have something? Is there something we can or should be doing? Is there any incentive, something that can maybe be reported out? Because I know we have a lot of babies through foster care and so forth that we care for as well. Through our partners with the hospitals, our end-of-day care levies, those kind of things. Just to see if there's some kind of plan, someplace to go, some phone number someone can call, so that we could kind of, as a county, kind of have a centralized operation, if you will, a nine-one-one system to help mothers and fathers who are out here with babies. And make sure if there's, I don't care where the powder, if we got found some baby powder somewhere, let's bring it together, let's try to help as we get through this difficult time. So I think that would just be helpful for us to bring our brightest minds, people that we fund, together and look at what do we have. I see this almost like we did with COVID, where we had a whole place where we were with the, with the hand sanitizers and everything we had. And maybe we, our emergency management, he's always on top of it. Is there something that we can put together or have together or information-wise so that no baby right now is looking for food and can't get it? So I just wanted to put that on the table, maybe something we can have. I don't know, maybe by next Tuesday, we have something that we, one number, one location, one place. Because I just, I just believe it's something we can do. I don't know what it is, but if there's something, let's try to do it. The other thing that I wanted to highlight, I haven't gotten around much, because I've had surgery. But I will say that I've been doing different Zooms and keeping things moving. Wanted to say that we should be hearing something hopefully soon about a relief-a-thon. We're still dealing with people who have their lights possibly being cut out or threat to be cut out. Water, threat of being, the water being shut off. And I know we had talked about having a, kind of a bigger place that one stop, people can go with the electric, gas and electric people there, the water people there, the computers are there, Jobs and Family Services is there. And we connect the resources to the people and connect the money to keep the lights and the roof over people's heads. So we'd like to certainly get an update on what that date is so that we can get that information out. But I have been talking and meeting with Director Patton about trying to get that moving so that we could get that information out. My understanding, the 513 relief bus is still under construction. However, there is a possibility that our body double can get back out there and continue to help people through the partnership we had with UC Health. We helped a lot of people, four thousand people, and people are still in need. So I'm excited to hear an update on there. We also had a presentation this week on the, well, before I go to presentation, let me just say, we had Garth Brooks. And Garth Brooks, you know, packed out the Paul Brown Stadium and added a second night to it. And wanted to, in the administrator's comments, find out what our rental was. Because my understanding is the rental of Paul Brown Stadium is a hundred thousand dollars per day. And if we got two days, if I do my calculations right, it was a win for Garth Brooks. It was a win for the Garth Brooks fans, but also hopefully a win for Hamilton County taxpayers. We would probably have brought in about a hundred thousand dollars on rental. We do a fifty-fifty split with the Cincinnati Bengals. So I would just ask the administrator in his comments to talk about that in terms of what we were able to bring in. But it also brings us back to the point that I'm really pushing, and I would like for us to get an update on, our board to get an update. In our contract with the Cincinnati Bengals, we are the landlord, if you will, of the stadium owned by the taxpayers and under our preview. And the Bengals are our tenant, and in the tenant lease, it indicated that we would be hiring a professional who knows how to bring in these big concerts so that we can make money back on behalf of the taxpayers. And I saw that and I said, wow, we're not doing enough. I mean, every now and then, we get a Billy Graham many years ago. We get a Garth Brooks once in, you know, every blue moon. But what if we had a Garth Brooks type of thing more often? And bringing in someone like a Live Nation or someone who has the contacts credibility, national tours, so that the national tours would hit here. Now, we have other facilities. We have Andrew Brady that holds a couple thousand. But I'm talking to these big ones, Coachella festivals, these big festivals that need big facilities. And one of the things I thought in our presentation from the Gendler Report, I believe it was, two hundred pages, what was missing was how do we make money on behalf of the taxpayers? And that the stadiums that we own, both Paul Brown Stadium and Greater Cincinnati, I mean, Great American Ballpark, they are sitting dark too often. We are responsible for three hundred and sixty-five days of expenses. We have to negotiate the workers down there, whether it's a game or not. They are on salary to work. And so as the expenses are three hundred and sixty-five days, we must find immediately ways to bring in additional revenue. And Garth Brooks showed that it can happen. So I wanted to get the administrator to talk in his comments about where we are with that. I'm happy to bring a resolution if need be, but it's in the contract. So it was already in the contract twenty years ago. And I want to know why we don't have a company like a Live Nation. And if we do have a company, who are they? And maybe they need to come before us and give us a roster of all the concerts that they have brought in the last twenty years. Because we are missing out on money, especially, like I said, Garth Brooks, if that brought in a hundred thousand dollars, can you imagine a couple more Garth Brooks? I need him to call his friend Tim McGraw and everybody else. I need everybody coming to Cincinnati, Hamilton County. So wanted to put that on the radar. And then lastly, we did have a presentation by the Convention District by Three CDC on Tuesday. And I want to thank Madam President for having that presentation. I've asked that we bring in both Sharon Veal Convention Center as well as Duke Energy Convention Center to talk about what they are doing, because a lot of, there was a lot of talk about what they're not doing. And I'm like, well, I think it'd be fair to bring them in to talk about what they are doing. We have the debt on both of those facilities that we have to pay off, along with the Millennium Hotel. The presentation that was made said that a convention hotel would cost about three hundred and sixty-eight million dollars. And then they went on with a presentation of a hundred million dollars to spruce up Convention Center. I think our focus has to be on the Convention Hotel, but I want to say here, it needs to be private. So I know that there are some models like Franklin County. And what I saw from the presentation, it started looking like it was leaning toward the public plan for this. And it's a lot for us to take on these type of, these type of deals. And I've asked them to be creative and look at other hotels that are being built around the country that are done with private money and not, the last Convention Hotel was private. And we need to make sure that we're bringing in private dollars. I was just a little concerned, and I also want to make sure that our focus is the hotel and get a report on the existing convention centers. Because I believe there's things right now that these convention centers that we already have can book more things if we have a convention hotel. So I just wanted to clarify that, because people started calling me, saying, wait a minute, y'all trying to get three hundred and sixty-eight million of my money? And then you got another, you up here talking about Paul Brown Stadium? Now don't you run out here talking about going up on my taxes. So I just want to be clear that that presentation from us, we were not voting on a public convention hotel. We certainly, at least I know myself, we're looking at private. We're looking for private developers to be able to privately fund a convention hotel. So just wanted to clarify that and make sure that people know that we didn't vote on anything like that yesterday. I mean, Tuesday. So that's all I have, Madam President, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. Yeah, just a couple of things. I was at the MAC breakfast earlier this week. This is the Human Services Advocates and Agencies in our community who are working on issues of, of mental health. And so they had a lot to say about how they're seeing an increase in people coming to, for services throughout the county related to mental health issues. And they're especially worried about kids. And so I think our ARP priorities line up with a lot of what I heard at that MAC breakfast, but I appreciated the information that they were conveying. I also went to the One Ohio meeting on Monday up in Columbus, representing Region Two. Appreciate your support, both of you, in sending me up there. It was an organizational meeting, and so we accomplished some things that were technical in nature. The governor spoke, but I'm looking forward to digging in with the other representatives throughout the state to get that money down into the communities as quickly as possible to try to, you know, save people and get folks into long-term recovery related to addiction. And then lastly, we all signed on to a paralegal day proclamation that I delivered a couple days ago. A Meg Wagner, an old friend, who was a paralegal, asked for the proclamation. And they had a celebration on the rooftop of KMK with a bunch of paralegals. And so we represented the commission. And so we represented the commission there with the uh proclamation and they were very grateful that we sent that over in recognition of the hard work they do to keep the legal system moving uh in Hamilton County. So I appreciate your support of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, just a a couple of of comments and then a couple of by leaves. Uh, first of all, Vice President Reese had a couple of of questions. Um, I can get a fuller report back to you um after the meeting or sometime later this week, early next week on some of these things. But um I think one of the questions was regarding infant formula. So Job and Family Services uh has been running point on that uh for the county. So we started to, I started talking with JFS um mid-last week uh about what they were hearing on the infant formula issue. Uh, at the time, they hadn't heard much. I believe over the course of the next several days, they had received a couple of calls uh to their uh to their hotlines um over at JFS, which um uh while it was just a couple of calls, uh my understanding is they typically don't get that type of a call at all. Uh, so it was um obviously indicative of what we're seeing nationwide. So uh they are working as they do get these calls, they're working with uh private pediatricians, they're working with Children's Hospital. They have supplies uh that they've secured through Children's Services. I had to try to make sure that they are uh connecting people who are in need with those supplies. So um I don't have much more of an update than that right now or than, other than to say that uh Children's Services in particular is on top of this and they're working uh actively to make sure they connect anyone who has that need with a supply here uh in the county, but I'll get a fuller report back to the board. Uh, and we can uh certainly ask for uh Director Patton to be here at staff meeting or even an update to the board uh prior to that, so I'll keep you posted on that. Um, there was a question about the rental fee at Paul Brown Stadium. As the board is aware, there's a hundred thousand dollar rental fee on special events uh that we split um fifty fifty uh with the Bengals. Uh, Garth Brooks was in town uh two days, so I believe that for the first day, I think he was, his first uh day was technically, I think, a Saturday and then they got the, they they did a second day that was technically on Friday. Um, and that second day, I believe they only, they didn't rent the, and they didn't look to rent the entire bowl. Uh, they only did the floor and and the lower bowl, so the rental fee was less for that. But yes, we would have split that half and half. Uh, so I can get the the board, it should come out to be seventy-five thousand, I believe, but I can, I can uh verify that with uh um with stadia and parking. Uh, as it relates to the um uh the uh retainage of events, um I'm not aware that we have a formalized contract on that, but I do know that the, that the Bengals utilize, uh I believe it's Ohio Valley Entertainment uh to secure and and retain events. I don't know that that agreement has ever been formalized, but I can check on behalf of the board and see if there's, if there is in the past a formal agreement on that. Um, and certainly to the degree the board wants to discuss that, we can discuss that that further. I think that was your questions, Madam Vice President. Was there an additional question? You you had spoken about the hotels, but before I move on to my, my by leaves, I just want to make sure that I've answered what you had asked.
Yes, so thank you. Uh, you did. I wanted to, I think that contract piece is very critical. And if we don't have a contract, I want to know who chose these folks to be over it because it says it should be the county. We're supposed to be in on it. And if not, I'd like to find out what do we need to do as a board to be moving. So twenty years, we've missed out on money that should be coming back to the taxpayers of Hamilton County. So I'd like to get that quickly. And then lastly, when they're in there, who is in charge of the concessionaires? I mean, a lot of people is out there buying beers and it was having a great time. Um, do the taxpayers getting that back? Who gets the concessions? Who's paying for the concession workers? We need a structure on special events. And I think it needs to be a part, a major part of our business model for all of these facilities that we own, uh particularly these two stadiums that we own so that it becomes a win uh for the county. It's in the lease, but I don't know how it's uh articulated. So uh I just don't want it to just be a willy-nilly. Uh, it's, you know, we're supposed to be the landlord and if we're the landlord, you know, a lot of times in the tenant, they say you can't subcontract your house. Uh, because, you know, so we want to make sure like, you know, wh- what did this mean for the county taxpayers? And if you could give us that, that would be very.
Yeah, I can certainly get back to the board with a summary of the revenue implications of special events, certainly, and expenditures.
Yes, and then please let us know about this agreement. Um, if I need to put a resolution for it, but I just think in the next thirty days, we need to be announcing uh a professional company, Live Na-, I'm just throwing them out there because they, they're out there. I know there's Live Nation, there's AEG, there's numbers, who can, who can bring a lot of these concerts in there. We just got these facilities sitting dark too long and we have to, we're footing a lot of the the costs to the taxpayers. So I do want to get so, get that uh straightened out and at least as our board, we can look at. But I, it's in our contract and I just want to know uh who that is by contract. Did we agree to that? And are they the best, I don't know them, but are they the best people to bring in multiple concerts like a Garth Brooks? I saw Yankee Stadium had Joel Osteen's going to Yankee Stadium and I know he paying a whole bunch of money. So we need to get some more things in here paying a lot of money uh to help us with some of these costs. So uh if you could get that to us, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you going to by leaves now?
I am going to by leaves now, yes. Unless, unless you had, sure.
Yeah. Um, when we talk about the formula, um you were saying there have just been a couple of calls that came in. That's a issue for me. Um, because the formula issue is a life and death issue. And the fact that we only got a couple of calls, that either means people don't know where to call. Um, they're desperate, they don't know what to do. Um, so then you get into advertisement, marketing about what JFS can do to help these moms and dads. Um, so I'm really concerned about the lack of calls coming in. And then um secondly, I would say as a county, if we can do an assessment of where the supplies are, people don't know where to go. Um, and our, our county facilities and agencies, what do we actually have uh in Hamilton County so people uh know where to go? And it sounds like the the supply is way down everywhere. Uh, but at least we need to know somewhere where we can have a list of this is where you can go and not go. And uh, and also let those moms and dads know who to call. So it's just, uh, as I said, it's a life and death issue. So, okay, that's all I had.
Sure, and Madam President, as as we've been discussing here, um I texted with uh uh Director Patton who said that he will provide more information uh today and tomorrow on the questions that you're asking about the supplies and how we are connecting folks to those supplies.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Um, just a couple, uh really one comment and then a couple of by leave uh items. Uh, first, uh just, um I did want to thank uh just one group of employees. Um, as the board is aware, we've got a little bit of work going on on the floor up here. Uh, we've got some work going on in our, in our, in our bathroom down the hall. We've got some work going on in the conference room uh down on the, on the, on the, I guess what would be the west, the west side of the building. Uh, up on the seventh floor, we have some painting and plastering going on up in uh on in the seventh floor and some of our training rooms. And just wanted to acknowledge the work of our uh painters and plasters. If you um haven't been over, members of the public haven't been over, you only have to walk over to the courthouse. And we have some of these old buildings we have, especially in the courthouse. Um, you know, where everything is plaster. And 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 that plaster over the period of decades starts to fall apart and the plasterers go in there and just do an absolute, I don't know, uh, any other word than wondrous job uh when you see just how much this has fallen, fallen apart. And then when they get to an area and then they move on, uh just how incredible that area looks. They, we, it's really just an art what what they do. And so I just wanted to thank our painters and plasters. They don't, they're a group that doesn't get acknowledged all all that often, but um and and there's not that many of them. We have uh on on the plaster side, Robert Varble, Lance Cletty and Joseph Fetti. And on the painter's side, Tate Boyle, Bill Shaw, uh and Jeff Stover. Uh, so I just wanted to acknowledge them today because of the great work they do. You may, with the work they're doing, you may see them in the halls a little bit more uh than we normally do, but they do great, they, they do great work on behalf of the county. I just wanted to thank them for that. Um, I do have two by leaves, uh two by leave items. Uh, the first relates to an item that we had. Uh, we, we heard in staff meeting on Tuesday. Uh, this is resolution modifying section five point eight of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners Personnel Policy Manual concerning tuition reimbursement. Um, uh, Human Resources Directors Pataro walked the board through this uh on Tuesday. Really excited to bring this back. I think as I told the board on Tuesday, this was one of the top recommendations of our employee advisory committee. Um, just as a, as a tool uh that an organization this day and age should have to continue to promote um the advancement and professional development uh of its workforce uh and to ensure that we are seen as an employer of choice uh in the community. And as I say, every time we have an onboarding class, you know, we want to get this organization to the point where people are thinking, when people are thinking about where do I want to work, they say I want to work for Hamilton County. Hamilton County is is the, is the best employer in the region and that's where I want to go. And this is just one of those building blocks that helps to to get us uh to get us there. This was a policy that was discontinued um as we started to enter into some financial hardships back in, I think, two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight. Happy to recommend today that it, that it be reinstituted uh off of mothballs out of the uh Personnel Policy Manual. So with that, I recommend approval.
Thank you so much. I will open it up for discussion, Vice President Reese.
Uh, I know, I just, I'm thrilled to be passing this today as part of a pack, larger package to uh make sure that we're retaining and um hiring folks into the organization and then dignify the work with some of these um extra benefits. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And so when you were saying that we had this about two thousand and seven, we had this tuition program, but due to our budget being structurally balanced, we're able to do additional things such as this uh for tuition for our staff to retain and also to be able to hire new people. So I would like to make a motion to adopt by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. And by leave number two, uh on May eighteenth, uh the clerk received a petition for annexation of sixty-two point three seven two acres of land from Harrison Township uh to the city of Harrison. This is listed on your agenda as the cur annexation. Uh, at this point in time, I would just recommend that the board approve this for the record and forward it to the engineer for appropriate review.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'd like to make a motion to receive for the record and send to the engineer.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. No further by leaves.
Thank you. And as Jeff, as you were talking about the repairs, that's another element that we're able to do because the budget is structurally uh balanced and we've been holding off as long as we could and now we're able to do that. So thank you so much and for staff that are making that happen. Okay, we'll move forward. Our regular agenda, we have our engineers here.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, just two items today, uh both of them at no cost to the county, so pretty easy. Uh, the first one is a resolution authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to uh execute preliminary legislation with, for State Route thirty-two and Eight Mile Road intersection with the Ohio Department of Transportation. This is basically authorize, allowing ODOT to work within county right of way for their intersection improvement at Eight Mile and Thirty-two.
Okay, thank you so much. Any discussion on this item? Nope, hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two is a resolution setting a hearing date for the consideration of pro- projects recommended for the funding by the twenty twenty-two Municipal Road Fund. Um, we're looking to uh hold the hearing on Thursday, June sixteenth at one, one P M. Uh, this will allow us to distribute the two point three nine million dollars in the municipal permiss- permissive auto tax funds for uh twenty twenty-two.
Thank you so much. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve item two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, before we go into a consent agenda item, I just wanted to digress as I talked about the Imagination Library and your ability to get at least two books monthly, beautiful books in the mail, your children, it would be under their name. I just wanted to make sure I let people know how they could do that. You can go onto ohioimaginationlibrary.org. And if you do not have a computer, please call my office, uh five one three nine four six forty-four ten and we will give you a phone number to contact to get your children involved. So we will move forward on the consent agenda items, items three through fourteen. Um, I'm just gonna go over a few of them and then see if you have any questions. Um, item four is a resolution authorizing the execution of the Fifth Amendment to bond purchase agreement um is for seven point nine, almost eight million dollars um from the original principal amount. Um, and then item five is a resolution amended Hamilton County's American Rescue Plan Act funding to allocate additional funding. We went through for nonprofit grants, so we, we've gone over this and discussed it. Uh, one million uh additional dollars. And then item six is a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into a joint agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and the Village of Woodland. Really happy for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This was from twenty twenty-one. Uh, we talked about, we couldn't get everyone in at that time, every uh township or village uh that had applied, but we're able to um include them this time through the Community Revitalization Grant. Item seven, uh beer awards and contracts authorized or executed by the Purchasing Department, one point seven uh million. And I had a question on item seven. Um, and I don't know if, is the mic on the, but the, you may know this, Jeff, the AVI food systems um that purcha-, um, is that a new uh food vendor? Do you know? Because we had talked about trying to diversify our food vendors for uh Job and Family Services and having smaller entities to be able to be a part of that uh purchasing process.
Uh, so this is over at JFS and this is an amendment number one, so it's, it's not a uh, it's not a new contract. I know Laura Wolf is is on on the phone. I know, I do know that, and I believe I provided the board with a re- a report in the past and I can refer it. It's been a little bit of time, but especially as it relates to the large food contracts that we have in the Justice Center uh and in the Juvenile Justice Center. Uh, the uh, the Purchasing Department has really made an effort to reach out to the, the vendors in the, in the community to determine uh whether there are smaller, more local vendors that can participate. A lot of times because of the um uh the regulatory requirements around some of this food service, um, the smaller vendors are unable to do so. But what we have encouraged um is the teaming up of some of the larger vendors with some of the more local, smaller vendors to encourage that those smaller entities be used uh for specialized food service uh in, in the various locations. Now, that's on our larger contracts. This one I, is a uh, an amendment. This is AVI, this is different than what we typically do with some of our larger ones. So I don't know if Laura has some additional information on the uh, on this particular agreement, but this is an amendment, so it would not be a new vendor. But uh, if Laura is on, if Laura wouldn't mind uh chiming in additionally on on this agreement.
Laura, are you on?
She was earlier. Or did we lose the Zoom feed? I believe this is the cafeteria. Um, so definitely not a new agreement, but um.
Jeff, it's Laura. I can, I can add some information here. This is actually publicly bid, as Jeff had stated, and we worked with the Purchasing Department to to hire the company. There are no county funds that go into this. This is purely a vendor situation where they set up their, their, what they're offering to our employees in the building or any of the clients that come in with employees if they need food. Um, and it's uh, it's a vendor situation. So we don't have cooks on site, we don't pay them. This is purely someone that comes in and offers the food. And this amendment actually increases the rates because of their increased costs with foods in the supply chain. Um, so there were some increases that they wanted to make with the items that they're selling.
Okay, and I thank, uh, thank you for that. But as we go back to what Jeff was saying, Laura, uh, how we were trying to include those small, smaller uh companies and vendors and things like that, and we've, we've been talking about it. And if, if there's a list of how we have included some, I would like to see, not when, when you can get it to me, because we've talked about it, I haven't heard anything different. And if we're doing that, that would be awesome.
Well, I, we work with Robert Bell and his team, and whenever there's any bids that go out, he's informed. We also review the bold list when we do issue procurements related to any of our work. If there are bold registered vendors that are on the list that are interested in those services. So we definitely do. And actually, AVI has been the only vendor in the community that has responded to the last three procurements.
And thank you so much. But I can, I can remember saying that the bids are so high. You have to cover so many areas that a lot of the small companies cannot afford to do it or can't do it. But can we just break it down a little bit where there's a RFP maybe for a larger amount? And then you break it down where a smaller company can do it, not you. But I'm just throwing it out for food for thought, and I'd like to see that we do that. So thank you so much. I understand this is not part of that, so.
You're welcome.
Okay, that's item number seven. And that's AVI. I had a question now. Is this the vending machines? Because I got some calls about there are minorities that do vending machines. Are these the ones that I'm looking at outside that's got the water and Coca-Cola or whatever?
Some of them are the sodas and that, but this all offers a full menu. So they do have some like quick cook items. They have salads. They have yogurts. They have a variety of foods that we can, staff can use so they don't have to go offsite to pick up lunch, breakfast, or whatever, or if we have family members that are coming in. So.
Okay. That's why I think President Dumas' point is we're breaking this down. If you go in and say, now, you've got to have this, I haven't seen the contract, but if you go in and say you've got to have this contract and you've got to have, you know, 45 machines hypothetically, and someone maybe have only 20 machines. I think it is concerning that this is the only group that ever bids. I'd like to have more clarification at some point. We keep talking about the bold list. Does anybody ever apply? Because some people have said that they may not apply because they don't want to just be added that we reached out to you. They want to know, do I really have a chance to get in this contract? We saw that when I was at the state, a lot of times people didn't apply because they were just putting them in their reports that, oh, they applied, but they were never going to get a contract. These companies don't have the time, the capacity, or the money to just do a bunch of bids. And once the state showed that we were serious about doing business, then all of a sudden we saw way more people applying. But I do want to put that on table, not necessarily for you, but for the administrator. We want to know, we got a list. Have we convinced the people that you're not just part of our check the box? Has anybody on the list ever gotten a contract? Because that gets other people wanting to be on the list. And back to the point that was stated earlier, maybe these have to be broken down. I've had people contact us that do vending, but may not do your salads and your yogurts or what have you, who could probably put a vending machine right outside that I'm looking at right here in our, in our facility. And I'm sure they've got Doritos and Cheetos and all that available. So I do want us to look a little bit deeper, feel that onion back a little bit more for these type of things, because you're right, it's a zero dollar. All we're doing is allowing them to put their machinery in our place. And then they have to stock it and then hope that somebody buys it. And then they've got to restock. So it's not like they're getting, you know, paid to bring the hardware in or paid to bring the potato chips and pretzels in. So I just think some of these that I look at are areas of opportunity. And I know Administrator Aludo, in our budget, we put some things that we could get done prior to a disparity study. We don't, we don't need a half a million dollar disparity study for someone to bring a machine in that we don't pay them to bring it in, for them to be able to sell some potato chips, pretzels, and some sodas. So I hope we can, those are some areas we said we're going to look at. What are some areas we could do some things in? This is, I think, one of those areas.
Madam President, if I could just briefly, so just number one to the question of have we hired vendors off of the, the bold list that we, that we maintain, the answer is unequivocally yes, we have. So, and I know that Robert works to get that information. I can also say that there are times where we've definitely looked at breaking down contracts to ensure that they are amenable to smaller vendors as well. So it can get back to the board on some of that as well. It's not, it's obviously not appropriate in every situation. And there's some times when the nature of the service is such that it requires something that someone just can't, can't fit on. But as we've talked about it with the board, we have implemented those strategies as we move forward. So just, so the board's aware of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I just also say, if there are people that got something off this bold list, if we can get a copy of who they are and how much they did and what was the type of business that they had? Maybe there's some areas of more opportunity. And then also for us, if they are getting the business, when someone calls us, we can say, wait a minute, let me show you a list of people who actually did get to business. But yeah, I know it's not appropriate for everything. But when you see janitorial, you see vending machines. These are some areas that I think we could have a little more opportunity in, so.
Laura, are you still there? Is that a yes? Laura?
Yes, I got muted. Sorry. Somebody muted me. I'm still here.
Okay, the dollar amount, even though it's zero, it is, there is money involved indirectly for our staff that will have to pay a higher price. What is the increase that they're asking for?
I'm not sure. They have a lot of different items, so it wasn't on everything. But I think there were certain items that they were having to do increases on, much like we've seen in the grocery stores. You know, increases with this.
Yeah, I don't need an itemized list of, you know, they raise chips $5 or whatever. But just in general, to make sure that we are overseeing that, because I think our vending machine is too, too high for the common person who comes in to, for a meeting or whatever, to be able to afford the prices in there. I even volunteered to pay the difference so people could just pay a dollar for something and that, that wasn't okay to do. But I'd like to know what their, just in general, what their increases are for the, for the vending machine.
Okay. I can see if I can get the listing of that from my staff person who manages this contract. So appreciate the questions. Yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm gonna, did you have anything about item seven at all, about the vending machines? Not about vending machines. Okay. So I'm going to go on through my items in summary. Item eight, authorizing the purchase of one 2022 Chevrolet Tahoe with the Sheriff's Department. And then I'm going to move on down. Under Human Resources, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a law enforcement liability insurance program for the county sheriffs. And then we have item 13, approving a MOU with the University of Cincinnati, extending a discounted tuition rate of 10% for eligible county employees, which is great. Their spouse, legal partners, and employees, unmarried children, as defined in the MOU, which is another area of staff incentives we're trying to do. And of course, under the Treasurer's Office, their monthly investment report was submitted. So I just wanted to give a brief summary of what we're doing for consent. Did you have anything under consent agenda items, Vice President Reese?
Yes, I just wanted to highlight item number 13, which I do think is great. I did mention to our HR Director on Tuesday during his tuition reimbursement presentation to see if there are other opportunities like this to offer to our employees. Look and see if there's something with Central State. Is there something with Cincinnati State? Is there something with others as well that we can have MOUs available so that we can provide a discount as well? So obviously with the, the cost of going to school and the debt, we're trying to reduce debt on the, on the heads of people. So these programs are very, very helpful. So 13, I just wanted to highlight that we did ask for that. And I believe our HR Director Frank Spataro said he was going to go back and look into those things. And hopefully we'll be able to have, have other partnerships. I did have a question. Item number four, it's a bond financing issue. And I had an issue regarding, not an issue, but I had a question of clarification on the Cincinnati Baseball Museum, I believe is at our baseball stadium. And I just wanted to maybe just kind of get a, an update or understanding. They said the principal amount is about 7.9, 7,955,000. Is this interest? Are we refinancing? This is for the Cincinnati Baseball Museum, I believe.
Yeah, Madam President, Madam Vice President, yes. So this is conduit debt that we issued on behalf of the Cincinnati Baseball Museum. So this is not debt that the, so for those who might be watching at home, the county is not paying this. But the county essentially lends its tax exempt status on the, on the museum. I believe the, the purpose of this particular transaction is, it was refinanced. I think it was issued back in 2019. It was reissued and refinanced in 2013. I believe is, is happening a lot in the marketplace right now, that when you have this type of adjustable rate, these types of adjustable rate bonds, that the, the borrower and the lender are agreeing to some different terms on what scale is specifically used on the adjustable to define the adjustable rate and the, and the timeframe over which that, those different scales will be used as, as the interest rates are, are going a bit haywire right now. There are some negotiations occurring between borrowers and lenders on that particular point. So that doesn't really affect the county from a payment perspective or dollars perspective, but definitely is of importance to the, to the borrower here. And I'm not sure if there's someone, there was going to be someone here, I think, from the bonding agency to talk about this, but I'm not sure if they, if they were able to, to. Is he perhaps on, on Zoom?
While we're getting them on Zoom, could you explain to me, I want to make sure. Okay. I just want to, who is the borrower? Is that the Cincinnati Reds or is that someone else?
Yeah, the, the borrower, well, under, it's not necessarily the Cincinnati Reds, but I think it's defined as the Cincinnati Baseball Museum itself, which is a 501(c)(3).
Okay. And then we have no liability.
Our credit is not, that is correct. For, for the, for the status of the bond issue, it's correct.
Got you.
Did we? Hello, you're online for the bond financing. If you'd like to say a few words, you're certainly welcome to do that.
Yes, thank you. My, can everyone hear me? I'm sorry.
We can hear you.
Thank you. So no, my name is Reginald Staples. I'm a partner here at Binsmore. The resolution before the commission today is a resolution to amend the bond purchase agreement. I think John explained it before that the bond were initially issued in 2009.
It's a little hard to hear you. You are echoing a little.
Yeah, Reginald, you're echoing very heavily. Bridget, do you have any suggestions as to what might be occurring there?
We have two audio sources open, so maybe a phone as well. If you're talking through your phone, that's fine. Put your computer on mute.
Are you still there?
Reginald, go ahead and unmute your phone.
Anyone hear me now? I'm sorry.
You're still echoing.
It's still echoing.
Why don't you go ahead and turn, it looks like you're also on a phone. Maybe if you turned your phone off, you, you wouldn't echo.
I do not have audio through my computer, so that's why I dialed it. So I apologize. I may have logged in twice into this meeting.
Yeah, that's a little better.
And put the, maybe put the microphone down. There you go.
Yeah. You can go on.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. So no, I apologize for that. No, what's before the commission today is a resolution to basically amend the existing bond purchase agreement.
It's not any better, Reginald. I think I got what I need. I just, I wanted to just understand. They basically want to extend, they originally was due on 2023. Well, they had a whole bunch of amendments, just the Fifth Amendment. So this will allow them to go to 2027 before they have to pay for everything. Is that pretty?
Yeah, it extends the period during which the, the bank will use a certain interest rate calculation methodology is the, one of the primary changes here.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't understand it. I wanted to know what was our, if any, liability on it? And, you know, making sure, is it like a cosigner of, like a car?
Yeah, it's traditional conduit debt that we.
Yeah, so they're just stretching it out so they can get a better rate. Okay, got it.
Okay, thank you, Reginald, for being on the line. Unfortunately, we're not able to hear you very well, but we have an understanding of what's going on, I believe, so.
I apologize.
I just have, I just have one comment.
Okay.
Are you finished?
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to point something out. It was regarding item seven, but it was related to some dollars that are being spent related to security over at the jail. And as we continue to work through windows and locks and elevators over at the jail, I just wanted to note that we continue to do this work and try to get that facility as secure as possible as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. With no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve items three through 14.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. No further business to come before the board. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.